Let's stand for the pledge, please. The flag of United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Clerk call the roll, please.
Brown.
Present.
Herbie.
Here.
Holt. Johnson.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Ness.
Here.
Sylvester.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion, Councilwoman?
I would move to excuse Councilwoman Holt.
Second.
Moved in second that we excuse Councilwoman Holt. Next item on the agenda is, all those in favor of excusing Councilwoman Holt, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Councilwoman Holt is excused. You've already received the minutes, is there any corrections or additions to the minutes? I would at this time ask for a motion to amend the agenda in terms of order to place item number eight, the city manager's report, move it to the end of the meeting just before the adjournment. Councilwoman Herbie.
I would move to amend the agenda and move the city manager's report to the end of the agenda.
Second.
Moved in second that we amend the agenda to place the city manager's report at the end of the agenda before the adjournment. Is that a roll call?
Yes.
Will the clerk please call the roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
It's been moved, the vote is that we would amend the agenda and the city manager's report will come at the end. Item number three, presentation business of the month, we were informed today that they would not be present and we will make sure that that award is presented to them. Next item on the agenda would be communications from the public, is there anyone from the public who would like to address the body? And we're seeing no one. We'll move to item number five, reports, first of those being, Human Resources, Councilwoman Holt, who is absent, is anybody on the committee got a report for her? Hearing none. The, there are no items on the agenda for the work session of the 23rd and we would, so, and she would have none to add. Before we, I'll come back to that one later. Next report is Public Improvement and Facilities, Mr. Sylvester.
I know reporters this time, ma'am.
Any questions for Mr. Sylvester? Hearing none, Mr. Sylvester, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session on the 23rd, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay, next report is Public Safety, Councilwoman Ness.
I have no report at this time.
Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Hearing none, Councilwoman Ness, I have no items on the agenda, do you have anything to add?
No, I did it in the Waycross programming meeting, so if you'd like, I can give some notes on our meeting. They, in looking back at 2019, they used 140, 58 volunteers, 892 new public access programs, they held over, they held 15 training workshops, they had new educational access programs, almost 200 of those, and then other educational programs, just over 2,500. So, the Waycross community board is always looking for volunteers and so you can contact them if you'd like to donate some time, they could greatly use it.
Any questions for Councilwoman Ness? Councilwoman Ness, I have no items on the agenda, do you have any to add?
No, sir.
Next report is Community Development, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report at this time.
Questions for Councilwoman Moore? Hearing no one, I have no items on the agenda for the 23rd, do you have any to add?
I do not.
Next report is Law Committee, Mr. Brown.
I do not have any reports at this time.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Brown? Hearing none, Mr. Brown, I don't have any items on the agenda for you at this time, do you have any to add?
No, I do not.
Next report is Governmental Relations and Communications, my report, I have no report, I'll answer any questions if there are any. I have no agenda items on the.
I'm the mayor.
My report.
Ways and means, I thought, oh, you didn't have any anyway, you got a report.
I have no report. But we still have to acknowledge.
I have any.
But you do have to at least go through the agenda.
Yeah, we gotta get to it, yeah.
I have nothing on the agenda for the 23rd, you got anything to add?
No.
Okay, good. Next item is item six, the mayor's report. I don't have a report per se, I will tell you that the last few days have been basically, it's been getting updates and from various levels of the government regarding what's going on with the, the present crisis, I, the city manager will go into that later on, so I will add anything that I had at that time. Next item on the agenda, other reports, first of those being Law Director, Mr. Wiko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have several items I'll just mention, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. I have drafted the posting places ordinance that you'll see tonight in reference to this virus emergency, also reviewed the vacant foreclosed and abandoned properties ordinance with approval, and I provided some additional information to Mr. Jones on that. I reviewed the resolution and drafted it for the electric and gas aggregation, I was involved in several discussions regarding the issues out of Inspirational Baptist and our police department. I reviewed the issue of special accommodations because of this virus and whether people who are challenged have an opportunity to be at public meetings or what have you. And then also I reviewed the new Forest Park Police Department general orders, and I reviewed an issue regarding a request to lease the Kemper Meadow soccer field. If there are no further question, or any questions, that would be the end of our report.
Any questions for the Law Director? Seeing no one, thank you, sir. Next report will be Clerk of Council, Ms. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report this evening.
Any questions for Clerk of Council? Okay. Then, next item would be new business, is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only, ordinance number 04-2020.
Is there, is there a second?
A second.
Been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only, ordinance number 04-2020, is there any discussion?
Just post it as required.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Motion passed at 6-0. Move to the next item on the new business, item eight, ordinance number 04-2020, would the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
Read, read by title.
Would the clerk please read it by title only, sorry.
Ordinance number 04-2020, an ordinance amending chapter 153 vacant foreclosed and abandoned properties, and chapter 156 comprehensive fee schedule of the Code of Ordinances.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 04-2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt ordinance 04-2020, is there any discussion, Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, this ordinance will repeal section 153 vacant foreclosed and abandoned property of Forest Park Code of Ordinances and replace that section with chapter 153 of registration of foreclosing managed property and vacant property in order to properly regulate foreclosed and vacant properties in Forest Park. Many foreclosed and vacant properties become blighted and the owners of the properties don't maintain them and can't afford to maintain due to financial situations. This ordinance will regulate foreclosures vacant properties by requiring the owners of such properties to register the property. The property will be subject to an inspection and be required to maintain certain maintenance standards and to properly secure properties as outlined in the ordinance. This ordinance was posted six days prior to the meeting, and I urge adoption.
Yes.
I had a question, in the literature that I have, this was originally declaring an emergency, is that true or not?
We, we want it to be an emergency ordinance so we can implement it immediately.
That is not in the title that she read and it was not there for us.
It's in the minutes.
The agenda.
Yeah, it's in the agenda meetings.
Yes.
It should be in the ordinance.
That was not how she read it.
I understand, but it's law.
And somebody seconded.
John, does it have to be read exactly?
Yeah, we should read it because it needs to be expressed as an emergency.
Would the clerk please read that ordinance by title only again?
Okay.
But I don't see. It's not in the title. Add it to it, okay.
Okay.
It's in the, it's in the body, but it's not in.
It's in the body, but it's not in, it's not in this copy of the agenda, it was in the other copy of the agenda.
It's online and it's in what I downloaded.
Yeah, it is online, it says.
It's not in the other printed copy that she handed.
Not in what, not in, well, not in, in Dottie's.
John, do you have, which copy do you have, do you know?
The title does not have the word.
I will read what's in the title, it says, "An ordinance amending chapter 153 vacancies foreclosing and abandoned properties, and chapter 156 comprehensive fee schedules of the Code of Ordinances and declaring an emergency." Let the record show that that is the wording of the ordinance, and now the clerk will call the roll and the vote.
Does, does the motion need to be made again?
No. John? Thank you.
Thank you.
We just need to read that title.
It has to be read into the record.
Should I read it or?
No, sorry, it's been read, just called the roll.
Okay, Herbie.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Order 04-2020, pass at 6-0. Next item is a motion to suspend, Councilwoman Herbie.
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution number 10-2020 by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution 1020 by title only. Is there discussion?
Posted as required.
Hearing none, the clerk called the motion on the roll on the motion to suspend.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Motion to suspend, passes 6-0. Item, next item is item B, resolution number 10-2020, would the clerk please read this resolution by title only?
Now, this one will have to be read in full, it wasn't posted.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Resolution number 10-2020, a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a master service agreement with Constellation Energy in order to provide aggregated electric services to the residents of the city of Forest Park. Whereas the city of Forest Park passed ordinance number 19-2019 for a proposed electric aggregation program. And whereas the electors of the city of Forest Park approved the electric aggregation program by vote at the general election on November 5th, 2019. And whereas the city of Forest Park must now proceed with a master agree, a master service agreement with Constellation Energy in order to establish the terms, including price of the electric services, to be provided to the city of Forest Park and its residents. And whereas the city desires to be a leader among governmental entities by providing citizens the lowest and best terms, including the negotiated price for the services and addressing environmental concerns over climate change by utilizing green energy whenever possible. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, city council hereby authorizes the city manager to execute on behalf of the city a master service agreement, agreement with Constellation Energy, a copy of which is attached hereto as exhibit A, with its terms incorporated herein. Section two, to execute said agreement, city council hereby authorizes the city manager to negotiate the lowest and best price for electric services and the authority to renegotiate at any time the terms of the master service agreement, including rates for services. Section three, city council hereby authorizes the city manager to choose for the electric services to be provided to our residents of Forest Park 100% renewable energy or green energy as recommended by staff. Section four, it is recognized by council that from the time this resolution is passed until the time the master service agreement is actually executed by the city manager, that changes in terms of the agreement, including pricing, structure may change therefore, including pricing, structure may change, therefore council authorizes the city manager to execute said agreement that may differ in any terms, including prices, not to exceed a price increase change of greater than 10%. Section five, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after its passage.
Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, I move to adopt resolution number 10-2020.
Been moved in second that we adopt resolution 10-2020, is there any discussion?
Yes, just briefly, the city recommends the contract length to be 36 months, these recommendations, with these recommendations in mind, the city has selected Constellation Energy as the city's electric supplier due to their bid being the lowest and the best at 0.0453 cost per kilowatt hours. Residents will be able to opt out or opt in to the city's electric aggregation program at any time without penalty or costs. I urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk call the roll on resolution 10-2020.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Resolution 1020 passes 6-0. Moving next to item C, a motion, and Councilwoman Holt's absence, member of the committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
I would move to appoint Jermaine Hill from Forest Park to the Community Programming Board, Regional Council of Governments, and the CPB Holdings Incorporated Board for the term expiring 3/31/23.
Been moved in second that Jermaine Hill be appointed to the Community Programming Board, Regional Council of Governments, and the CPB Holdings, Inc., for the term expiring 3/31/23, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Mr. Hill is appointed to that board. Next item on the agenda is item D, a motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I would move to receive the general front summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Been moved in second that we receive the general front summary report as contained in the departmental reports, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the general front summary report, motion passes 6-0. There is a motion to amend the, I think we, to amend the agenda, take up item E at this time, it's an ordinance to amend posting places, is there such a motion? Councilwoman Herbie.
I would move to amend the agenda and take up at this time item E in ordinance to amend posting places.
Second.
Been moved in second to amend the general, amend the agenda and take up at this time item E, which is an ordinance to amend posting places, is there any discussion? Hearing none, this vote requires a two-third vote, would you call the roll on the motion to amend?
Ness.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
The agenda, the motion to amend has been passed, 6-0, so we've moved to item E, ordinance number 05-2020. I believe this is an emergency and this can be read in full, right? This can be read, does it have to be read in full?
Read in full.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I want to point out, there's a typographical error on my part.
Okay.
Addition should be in all capitals, that should be the entirety, paragraph F.
Okay, does everybody get that? What? Let him finish.
Yeah.
That's it.
John?
Paragraph F should be all capital.
Paragraph F should be all capital, okay.
It could be at the end, doesn't matter.
Okay, so at this time, we would need a motion to, for Mr. Brown, a motion for ordinance 05-2020.
Oh, I move that an ordinance amending chapter 30.02 of the codified ordinances of the city of Forest Park as it relates to posting places and declaring an emergency.
Second.
No. Okay, is there a second, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number 05-2020. Is there any discussion, Mr. Brown?
Actually, I don't have, I don't mind.
Can we read the additions?
Mm-hmm, and it's supposed to just be item F?
Just item F.
It should be a new one in your package.
Here it is.
Oh, I don't have it.
It's right here.
Okay, okay.
She will read it first, right?
Right, yes.
She's got to read it first.
Okay, okay.
Ordinance number 05-2020, an ordinance amending chapter 30.02 of the codified ordinances of the city of Forest Park as it relates to posting places and declaring an emergency. Whereas this ordinance is in response to the recent outbreak of coronavirus disease 2019, COVID-19 in Ohio, and in response to Governor Michael DeWine's declaration of a state of emergency, executive order 2020-OID, which follows the Center, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention interim guidance, which makes recommendations of how best to decrease the spread of COVID-19. Whereas the health, safety, and well-being of the residents of Forest Park, Ohio, and all employees and staff of the city of Forest Park now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that section 30.02 posting places of the codified ordinances of the city of Forest Park is hereby amended to read section 30.02 posting places. Ordinances, resolutions, statements, orders, proclamations, notices, and reports of the city required by law or ordinances to be published shall be published by posting copies thereof in the five most public places as determined by the city council in the city as follows. Section A, Forest Park Municipal Building Enclosed Protected Bulletin Board, 1201 West Kemper Road, Forest Park, Ohio, 45240. PNC Bank, 1180 Smiley Avenue, Parkwood Plaza, Forest Park, Ohio, 45240. Public Library, Forest Park Branch, Sharon and Waycross Roads, Forest Park, Ohio, 45240. Kroger, 1212 Kemper Road, Forest Park, Ohio, 45240. Public Library, North Central Branch, Hamilton Avenue, Cincinnati, Colrain Township, 45240. If the state of Ohio should declare a state of emergency for disease control and prevention, or if such emergency is declared to be effective within the state of Ohio as determined by the federal branch of government, the clerk of council is hereby granted the authority to determine the best methods of posting such public notices to include but not exclusively an emergency change of posting locations by deletion of any of the above specified public places with replacement by posting at other public places to include but not exclusively the municipal building fire department and cone station. Postings done in accordance with any declared state of emergency shall remain effective until said emergency is concluded. Section two, because said, because this ordinance is an urgent matter of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Forest Park and the city, and the city's employees and staff, it is hereby declared an emergency and shall take effect and be in full force immediately upon passage.
Mr. Brown, is the motion?
I move that we adopt ordinance number 05-2020.
Second.
Been moved in second that we adopt order 05-2020, is there any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk, please call the roll on ordinance 05-2020.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ness. Yes.
Order 05-2020, pass at 6-0. Next item on the agenda is a motion, is item F, a motion, and I would ask Councilwoman Moore if she would make that motion and I will speak to it.
I motion to recess from March 17th of 2020 through May 17th of 2020.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we, that's a motion to take a recess from March 17th, 2020 through May 17th, 2020. The reason for this motion is, is this, in brief, because of all of the directives out there in terms of the, of gatherings and people be, people staying or being no more than X number of feet apart, and depending on who you listen to, how many people can get together, whether it's 10 or 50 at this point, and we all, we don't know what that may end up being tomorrow. So, what I am proposing here in this motion is that we recess, as, pretty much as we do in the summer, and given that, along with that recess, as always, if there are issues and reasons for us to meet, we can always have a special call meeting. In addition to that, when and if we need to meet to have a special call meeting, the city manager and I, in conjunction with the people at Waycross, we've already talked to them, and they will, we will either, and I'm probably going to get these words wrong because I don't do technology, we will meet, we will have audio meetings, everybody should now have his or her laptop, iPad, so we will do iPad hookups, and those meetings will be either full audio or, depending on their capability and how soon they can get them up, they will be, Skype, Snipe, whatever, whatever they were, yeah, they will be that. So, in the meetings, if we have them as regular, on regular times, you can be hooked up wherever you are and participate in the meeting that way. And the reason we're doing it through Waycross, because we will be in keeping with, I think John will verify, we will be in keeping with state law in terms of meeting, we'll be meeting the requirement to have meetings publicly, since that meeting will be, since those will be broadcast by Waycross, either audio or both audio visually, we will be in compliance. We will not be in violation of the sunshine law by doing it that way. Additionally, we are not restricted from taking votes as long as it's a public meeting, and because they will be broadcast, they will be public. I think it would be a little bit hypocritical of us to take the position that everybody else is being told not to meet and not to gather if we did it in our meeting. So, for that reason, we will take this action to, technically we'll be, we will recess, but we will be available to take, to continue to take care of the business of the city without, without skipping a beat. Any questions or comments, Mr.?
Mayor, the only thing I would add, and I'm sure Sally already knows this, is that in our public notice of any meeting, it has to be specified how the public can access these meetings.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding that, that issue? Seeing none, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing no one, all those in favor of the motion for recess, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion? Motion passes six zero. We will now move to the next item on the agenda, which is item number seven, the city manager's report.
Good evening. The, I'm going to do away with most of the other discussion. I think the primary concern is from most folks here and out in, the folks viewing from home as well, are the city's regard to and how we are reacting to the COVID nineteen coronavirus, and what steps the city is taking and how we're going to move forward and address the ever-changing situation. I have issued up a memo last week to all council members and department heads as well. We update the, the department heads actually quite a bit, and we had another meeting this morning or this afternoon discussing changes. It's an ever-changing, quick-flowing situation, and we're trying to keep ahead of it with how we react and actually move it up. So I want to, I want to go ahead, I'm going to go ahead and read most of it. So you've already seen it, but the people out in the, out in the general public probably haven't had this information, so it's a good place to start the discussion and to tell everyone about an update as to what we're doing. The city of Forest Park is part of the Hamilton County General Health District. We use the city of, excuse me, we use Hamilton County Public Health as the city's health department. Hamilton County Public Health serves more than four hundred and eighty-one thousand Hamilton County residents residing outside the cities of Cincinnati, Norwood, and Springdale. Basically, everybody else that is not in Cincinnati and those other two cities. Hamilton County Public Health is one of one hundred and thirteen local health departments in Ohio and is part of a highly organized prevention and response effort for the coronavirus. The agency is in lockstep with the Ohio Department of Health, Disease Control, the CDC, and managing protocols for prevention and, if necessary, mitigation of cases of COVID nineteen. The city of Forest Park has been and continues to be engaged in the Hamilton County Public Health as an essential partner in responding to the public health issues surrounding the outbreak. We have a seat at the table, and we have had a seat at the table since day one. City of Forest Park relies on information provided by the health professionals at the Hamilton County Public Health, the Ohio Public Health, and the CDC. And their informed guidance is how we properly respond to the outbreak. This guidance is updated in real time as the situation continues to evolve. The objective is to make clear, rational, data-driven decisions to protect the public and not take imprudent or warranted actions that may sow unnecessary fear and panic among the citizens we represent. As such, in order to ensure, to limit, and to mitigate the spreading of misinformation regarding the city's response to the outbreak, all official city, all official information regarding the city of Forest Park's response to the outbreak shall be provided only by one office, that's the office of the city manager, that's me. The city manager will provide updates to the public, to the citizens as necessary or as required based on the information and guidance provided by the public health experts. We are, we are using the public health experts to determine our response. They're the experts, and we will be governed by their recommendations. Hamilton County Public Health is, in conjunction with the Ohio Department of Public Health, the CDC, the World Health Organization, are closely monitoring the COVID nineteen situation. And for the latest county and national information, we have a link at our website that is to the CDC, the Hamilton County Public Health, and the Ohio Department of Health. They issue updates daily. They, actually, they issue some of them hourly, depending on how things change. Due to Governor Mike Dewine's orders to close all public schools for three weeks and banning public gatherings of more than a hundred people, now that's fifty, and as the mayor says, it's probably going to a lot lower number. To prevent the spread of COVID nineteen, and out of an abundance of caution, the city is implementing social distancing practices. So you can see here, if you want to know why we've changed the look of city council, that's the reason, is because we're practicing what we're preaching. We are open for business at this time, but we recommend phone calls or emails instead of in-person contact if you have to do business with the city. We will accommodate those who need to drop off paperwork or items. If you need a permit, if you need a, if you need tax returns, we have drop boxes and we are available to take those, that information. We are discouraging and are limiting actual access to the building from the general public for, other than dropping off information. So let's get into a little bit of what we've done. We are, rest assured, planning, planning every day. And changes, this thing changes all the time, and I guarantee it will change by tomorrow. So from the administration standpoint, as the mayor said, he and I have been meeting regularly quite a bit over the last several days and trying to craft the city's response. And so he's been actively involved with the administration and with the employees in crafting this response. City leaders have been monitoring the information in the news and are keeping close contact with the area's key leaders to stay on top of the developments. The city is communicating with employees on measures to put in place to avoid infection, including providing additional hand sanitizing stations, increasing cleaning measures, and limiting public access to the city administration building, as we just spoke of. They also have discussed future steps that could be taken if necessary to lower the impact of COVID nineteen in the workplace in the event that an outbreak in the U.S. with the objectives of reducing transmission among staff, protecting people who are at high risk or have adverse health complications, maintaining business operations here at the city, and minimizing the impact of services to the community and ensuring continuity of governance. The city is working closely on a plan of action for all city operations in the event the pandemic progresses further. As mentioned earlier, all Ohio public schools will be closed for at least three weeks, and many of our employees have school-aged children and will be profoundly impacted by this. The plan currently being devised will determine a list of essential personnel to ensure essential services are being performed. For instance, payroll, safety services, police, fire, executive management, to name a few, IT services. If the city employee is not classified as essential, they may utilize any leave balance, vacation, personal comp time, sick to take care of their household during this time. While it's not possible to offer formal telework arrangements for all employees, the city will consider on a case-by-case basis requests from employees that can feasibly work from home during this time. While not all positions are conducive to telework, those positions with primary job responsibilities that can effectively be performed remotely will be given consideration. In the event of further closures of government or government mandates, we will issue further directives and circulate them to the employees. Police and fire, police and fire department leaders have implemented increased health and safety measures for their staff. Fire and police department personnel are all designated as essential employees and will be expected to continue to provide services as usual during this outbreak. They are taking steps within the fire and police department to protect themselves and to protect employees and to make sure that they're following the best safety protocols to limit their exposures. Their leaders have participated in conference calls with Hamilton County Public Health officials regarding COVID nineteen. Officials said, at these meetings, officials have said from Southwest Ohioans are at low risk for becoming infected at this time. However, this can and will change rapidly, obviously it has, as the outbreak progresses. They also discussed the communication strategy and the creation of a framework for municipalities within the city, excuse me, within the county that have become impacted. Police and fire departments are suspending some non-essential functions, including CPR classes, AED classes, and so forth. Outside training classes, bringing people in to train in our facility, all of those non-essential functions that we deem there is discretion as to when they can be done, we are using our discretion to move them out into the future. Communications, the city will continue to communicate with the public about COVID nineteen. Information sources on social media, our website, Facebook, Twitter. We have FP News, and we also have a significant, over two thousand email addresses for individual residents who have registered with the city. We also have Swift nine, Swift nine one one, the SWIFT system, where we can provide robocalls and information out that way in the event that there is something that we really need to get out. All information and communications regarding the city of Forest Park's actions and policies will flow through the city manager's office, and no other source should be considered authoritative. We want to make sure that there's not a big rumor mill going on. We don't want everybody thinking and passing along bad information. So we're telling the public that if it's not from the city manager's office and official to our website, that it's not an official response, and they should take it with a grain of salt. All calls, inquiries directly related to the spread of the virus will be referred to the Ohio Department, should be referred to the Ohio Department of Health and the Hamilton County Public Health Department. City of Forest Park is separate from the Wittenwood School District. We have met and we are coordinating our efforts with the city, with the Wittenwood School District. But the public needs to know that we are two separate entities, as well as the Northwest School Districts. All questions related to the Wittenwood School District or the Northwest Schools, local school districts, should be directed to the appropriate district. We have a link that is going to be, that is provided on our website, and it's at the end of the notice as well, to those districts for information. And we have received calls with regards to school closures and so forth and referred those folks to the appropriate individuals at the school district. Mayor's Court, due to coronavirus concerns with our health and safety in mind, as part of that, and our city employees, again, we want to protect our city employees so that when we, that we can continue to govern the city and continue to work. We want to reduce, our overall effort is to reduce exposure for our city employees. Mayor's Court, that was originally scheduled for three nineteen, March nineteenth, a couple days from now, has been canceled. Regular traffic and minor misdemeanor cases have been continued till April second. We'll reevaluate after that date. If you have any questions, please call Mayor's Court at five one three, five nine five, five two two four. Again, that information is available on our website. Tax cases will be continued till the next tax court date, which is May twenty first, two thousand twenty, at six P.M. Prior to your court date, you will need to contact the tax department to finalize your tax filing for the years in question. You can contact the tax department at five one three, five nine five, five two one one if you have any questions concerning your tax situation with regards to a tax case. Again, anyone who has any questions concerning this, they can be directed to the Mayor's Court Office, again, five nine five, five two two four. Tax filers, it's tax season. This couldn't come at a worse time in terms of the city and what we need to do in terms of collecting taxes, as well as filing taxes for individuals. In response to that, again, for the safety of the city residents and the city staff, the tax department will not be seeing residents in the tax office to do their taxes. You may drop off your taxes, drop off your information. We will receive that information. Our tax preparers and our tax analysts will then take that information back to our back office. That is to keep people, because normally they would come in and they would sit in the back office. There's a, that is a significant amount, that's our finance department as well. We don't want to expose those folks to, at times, over two hundred people a day. So we are limiting that access. We will prepare your information, prepare your taxes, and contact you either through email or through telephone to let you know what the situation is. In response, you can also e-file at forestpark.org. You can pay, and e-pay at the forestpark.org as well. You can mail your taxes directly. Drop boxes are available here at the city, in the front and outside. They're located between the fountain and the employee entrance and just outside the main entrance. We would hope that most folks would file e-file. That would solve a lot of problems and use the e-pay to pay any outstanding balances. If an individual taxpayer needs the city to prepare their local income tax return, again, drop off the required information, including W twos, your federal ten forty, to the drop box. Currently, the tax department will make copies of it and hand it to you back. There will be someone here that can do that. We expect that to, quite frankly, to stop within the next couple of days. The returns will be handled as we would normally handle them. We are extending the due date for payment. So the taxes are still due April fifteenth. However, we're extending the payment date an additional fifteen days without penalty so that we can handle everyone and get their taxes done and make the conversation back and forth. The senior center and parks and recreation, again, in keeping with the governor's orders to limit mass gatherings and in conjunction with the public schools' closure, the need to protect the most at-risk population, which is the senior citizens. The Forest Park Senior Center will be closed beginning March sixteenth. We will continuously reevaluate the situation, updating the status of the closure. All city-sponsored programs, classes, and events taking place within the senior center during this time will be canceled, except for the March seventeenth voting, which as of right now is still on. That may change by tomorrow morning. It is, if you're watching this, it is the sixteenth Tuesday night, the day before Election Day. The, any existing senior center private rental reservations will be honored at this time. Those are private events, which should, which the city has entered into contractual arrangements with. However, we are in the process of contacting all the folks who have rented the facility and strongly suggesting that they either reschedule their event with us, and we are offering other dates. We've also extended our ability to cancel an event without penalty and will return folks' deposits and so forth as needed. We have been, in terms of the Recreation Department, senior citizen, public works, we are, they've increased the cleaning process. We're now making sure we wipe down and clean the facilities, all of the facilities, not just the senior center, thoroughly and comprehensively in the morning and in the evening. And again, to try and prevent as much of the spread of the disease as we can. City council meetings, again, they're going on as scheduled. However, as of the writing of this, they were scheduled, but now we're going to be in recess. Again, we are taking the social distancing protocols, and you can see we are spread out. This can be a situation where if there were council members and there was something that was really heated and important, this could be a source of, several, more than fifty people could easily come to a council meeting and something that could be very problematic. In the meantime, you can watch city council meetings live on Waycross Media. You can watch them through Spectrum Channel twenty-three and FiOptics Channel eight fifty-three. You can also watch them online with waycross.tv/forestpark. So those are the ways that we're trying to maneuver this situation. In general, we're looking at, sort of, our protocol is to identify possible work-related exposures and health risks and address them every day. Review the human resources policies to make sure that our policies and practice are consistent with public health recommendations and consistent with the existing state and federal workplace laws. And we'll be offering that information. We've received several requests for information from the public with regards to if they're laid off, that they still have health care. Not our employees, but other folks are calling us for this type of information. We're not experts, but we can refer them. We're not experts, but we can refer them to the Ohio Department or to the Hammond County Department of Jobs and Services, and they'll have all that information with regards to health care and unemployment. We've also had a lot of questions about that. Our website will provide links to those sources so that people can find that information for themselves. We're making sure that we're flexible and we're trying to use best practices. We're looking at our supply chain and looking at the types of things that we have to buy that are most important, making sure that we have valuable and trusted sources and that we can continue to, our operations, without a shortage of something that's vitally needed, such as gasoline or things like that. We want to make sure that we have processes in place. We have, earlier this year, we switched to credit cards for gasoline, to gas cards. And so our employees, they don't have to rely on our fuel tanks or some other company bringing gas to our facility. We can buy gas all around the city, so long as there's gas available anywhere in any place. So that's one of the things we've done. Again, we're looking to explore whatever, and establish policies and procedures and practices that have a flexible, allow us to have a flexible work site. Telecommuting will be important. Our staff is not that big once you get past police and fire. Most of our people are essential. Our job is to make sure that the people are safe, that our employees are safe as best as we can, and to limit their exposure and the opportunity for them to get sick. But we still have to serve the public. That is our primary goal, to make sure that if you call the police, they'll show up. If you call the fire department, they'll show up. Our public works folks, we've looked at staggering starting times and assigning individual vehicles to individual employees so that they don't cross-contaminate vehicles. We've done that. They'll be starting, the public works will have staggered starting times. They'll be reporting directly to work sites rather than to one central location. So we're doing things like that. We're also looking at staggering work times for our finance department, so that everybody's not sitting there all together, so that we can maintain continuity. We've identified business functions that directly impact the citizens, in particular the tax department, permitting, making sure that we can get our inspectors to the, over there to the, to the schools, so that that doesn't slow down waiting for us to inspect. If you need a permit, if you've got a bad heating and air conditioning unit and you need a permit, you can come here and apply for it by dropping the stuff off. We want to make sure that you're not going to have to wait three or four weeks to get a permit to put a furnace in. So those are services that the city needs and citizens need, and we're going to make sure that they're maintained, but we're in the process of making sure that we have the right types of protections for our employees and weigh that against the ability and the convenience of our citizens. We're looking, we're working on our communication and information plans. Again, we've looked at not only information to the citizens, again, we can use all of our different options, but also communicating to our employees. If we end up having to shut the building and some of them have to get, go, basically they can't come to work, if that ends up being the situation, if they have nonessential personnel and essential personnel, we need a way to communicate with them directly, so whether that's their home cell phones, email addresses at home. And we're testing right now our IT and setting up IT services so that folks can work from home. We're also setting up the Skype and other ways to have meetings, so that people can be working from home and still be in touch with the folks up here if we're still open. So all of those things are what we've been doing for the last week, and we're still doing it, and we're still testing it, and we're still working on it. And we're trying to make sure that we fill all the gaps where we can. Obviously, there's something's going to slip through, but we're trying to do all the what-ifs and effectively manage the situation as best we can. And rest assured that our staff is right on top of it. They are plugged in to the county, to the state, to the feds, and we are doing everything we can to make sure that the citizens can still get the services that they need.
Couple of things before we go, if anybody has any questions. It's vitally important that before we leave here tonight, make sure that Sally has your contact information, your latest, up-to-date contact information, so that if we need to contact you, if they need to contact you, they can get you. It may be a situation where, you know, what we don't want to do is we don't want to leave a message or send out an email and we don't get, you know, and she doesn't get responses back within a very, very short turnaround time. So we're going to have to make sure that she and they can get to us if and when they need to, secondly. And equally as important, as Don mentioned a couple of times there, all of the information that goes out about the city and what the city is doing has to come from one source, and that's the city manager's office at this point. If you are approached to have questions, and they're going to be from our citizens, the best thing you can tell them is one or two things, either direct them to the city hall, or you can tell them, you know, I'll look into it and I'll get back to you. And check that with Don before you give them an answer to any question. It may seem like a small question or a small request, but we want to make sure that whatever is being said, we're all saying the same thing based on information that Don has given us. That's vitally important, and everything that Don talked about that we are doing, we're doing based on what we've been told and information we've been given by public health. You know, we're not going, you know, we aren't taking that and adding to, we aren't taking that and subtracting from. We're sticking directly with the script, because as I said earlier, you know, we've already noted that not all of the information is exactly the same from everybody out there. And we don't want to become part of that misinformation piece. So, and the last thing I'll say before, that has really not a lot to do with what Don said, I just, I was just informed, tomorrow's election is still on. The appeal, the request from the governor's office was turned down, primarily because the judge felt that there was not enough lead time to vacate the election or to move it. So that election is going to take place tomorrow, that's just informationally. I would suggest that you watch your local news tonight, or again, if anybody calls you or asks you about it, as far as of right now, until and unless there's an appeal, and John, you know this more than anybody, I don't, you know, courts can do a lot of things in a lot of different ways quickly. So if there's an appeal and somebody above that judge reversed that judge, we may be back in that same situation, and it may not resolve itself before the opening of polls tomorrow, but as of right now, that election is still on. Okay, so at this time, just, we'll take questions.
Mr. Jones, for the, for our spring rec leagues, will those, what's the status of those, are those canceled?
Canceled as of now.
Okay.
Really quick, Mr. Mayor, if I can. Don, I just kind of want to shed a little bit of positivity on so much anxiety. I just want to thank you for keeping the city running, and all city employees, so all of our residents can continue to receive the services that we need, but also, I also want to shed a little light on the people who aren't getting as much recognition, but grocery store employees. We want to thank them tremendously for everything that they are doing, keep, you know, working around the clock to make sure, you know, shelves are stocked, make sure that we can feed our families. I want to thank the residents for continuing to take, you know, only what they and their family need, but also remember that we are a close-knit community, and if you can call and check on your elderly neighbors, people who you know aren't as mobile, to see if they need anything while you make your grocery store run. But yeah, I just wanted to, you know, throw that out there, because even though this is a very anxious and trying time, we are a close community, and we'll make it through together.
Anybody else? Rob, if you got anything from the health side.
Just making sure that you're taking care of yourself and following the recommendations of our county health department and our CDC and our, the governor, and just making sure that we wash our hands properly and social spacing.
Anything else from anybody else for the good of the order? John, obviously, through all this, we're going to be on the phone with you a lot, I'm sure, because every day there's going to be something new that comes up that we, we're going to have to ask you, you know, how do we go about doing it? And they've taken care of a couple of things for us already, and I'm sure there's going to be even more. I will say this, if in fact, if you know, or you, you know, if you know somebody or find out that there is a business open that should not be open, you need to let somebody, you know, first of all, you need to, if it's somebody that you know, a friend of yours or whatever, let them know that there are some dire consequences to violating these orders, and they're running the risk of not only fines, but it could be jail time, could be lost license, could be loss of those kind of things. And I think, John, you said it's a what?
Second-degree misdemeanor to violate the Department of Health order.
So anything else from anybody else at all?
Mayor, I would say that we're going, this is, this was, the information I read tonight was from Friday. It has changed already, and we'll be updating our website again tomorrow. So I would refer people there tomorrow afternoon as we update, based on the governor's discussion this afternoon, and make sure if anything else changes, but please go there first, there's a spot there. We're going to update that again tomorrow, and we're going to be adding things to it as we make changes, and I expect it not to panic. This is something that we will get through, and the city will come out stronger at the other end and more together, because, as Aaron says, it's a, it's a unique community, and everybody helps each other here. And I'll second that thing. If you know somebody, since the Senior Center is closed, if you know somebody that got out and that was their thing, and they really enjoyed it, and give them a call, make sure that they're doing okay. We're going to try and do that as well with our, with our members, but make sure that they're, you know, that they're taken care of and they're not just sitting around. Loneliness and self-isolation is what they're talking, or whatever it's called, it's, you want to isolate yourself, but that's probably some of the worst things that older folks can do, is be isolated. So give them a call and go see them as best you can, but don't get them sick.
Okay. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, we're adjourned.